What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at a hand history that Tim played from the side of
ACR
So, uh, yeah, tell us about it.
Uh, yeah, so fifty dollar PKO on ACR, uh, it's you know decently big 10K guarantee. Um, it's twenty five dollar bounties, um, so.
What kind of structure is it?
Reasonable, like not super slow, but not super fast, yeah. Um, I could look it up, I actually did okay in the same event this week, maybe it's gonna be, uh, maybe it's gonna be like my, my, my specialty now.
Did you, uh, did you late reg it? I see you kind of, uh, you only have fifty five bigs here.
I might have, I will late reg these when I see that, you know, there's still like ninety plus percent of the prize pool or the, the player pool. You know, I don't wanna late reg a bounty too late, but at this point I definitely feel like I didn't give up much.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is not even close, to be quite honest, like I'm snapping this off so quick.
Oh yeah, no, but it's like, I shouldn't open it, like it's not an open, right?
Oh yeah, you're, you are a pipper two wide, I mean, I mean, to be honest though, I think, uh, expanding your range to try to capture, have an opportunity at capturing these sub ten big blind stacks is a great strategy.
Well, that's the thing, I think in this case, I was looking at small blind um, and big blind and seeing that there was bounties to earn, so that's gonna make me a little wider.
Sure, uh, you could probably open that ace four, but.
Yeah, ace four is an option there, right?
Yeah, I do a lot of, uh, I like a lot of jamming when I open late versus a late imposition guy, you can obviously call, but.
Just jam back.
Yeah, like those six, like those sixes right there.
Yeah, I think that's a decent play. Like you probably can't do it a hundred percent, but it's probably.
No, you. Six is, is starting to get a little too good. This is.
In that case, I will lean for, uh, I shoved pocket fives a minute ago from the cutoff for seventeen bigs. It's a bit of a compromise of, um, not being super excited to raise fold it or to just not play that hand.
No, it's good, it's a PKO, they're gonna call you like.
Does everybody just hear that king ten up on the flop?
I didn't honestly, we're going like light speed right now.
Yeah, we can slow down.
I don't know, I mean, you guys think there's merit in calling her with the tennis speed, I thought it's a fine fold.
Did I defend, did I defend the big blind or I, I opened three and then I checked folded, I checked folding flop?
So, I just, I fold these spots, man, because even if you improve to a pair, what do, what do we, what are we hoping for here?
Exactly, maybe, maybe the king has paid, right? We could check.
Maybe.
That's it, right? I like the fold, so I didn't.
I think he just has, like he has mid pocket pairs a lot, uh, and also I looked at that seventeen big spot and DTO wizard has it as a like majority jam from the cutoff seventeen bigs.
Oh, I'm sure, anyway, you were getting punished him. The first few rounds, you're getting, you're getting like punished, so at this point, I mean, put the chips.
Yeah, just running, running cold a little bit, it's fine.
I think that.
You could bet big here, you could bet small, I mean, honestly, I think betting's the, the takeaway for sure.
I think the thing that I thought with this hand is, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty lit up, like it's pretty wet.
Yep, there's a, there's, it's two-tone, there's an open ender available.
Thing is, you're blind versus blind, you're, you got that board so locked up, you don't wanna lose him.
So you can. I mean, yes and no, but like, does he have ten sticks? Does he have jack six?
You can look at it if you want, I honestly, I, I I don't think it's gonna be.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we're range betting, so a big bet's probably fine.
I'm pulling it up on my end too.
Yeah, it's just like twenty five, the limp's fine, obviously.
Yes, definitely a limp, it's a preferred limp.
And then, so you got some mixing of larger sizings here, but like, I mean.
Oh, it's really not.
You're ranging.
Small or check.
Interesting, and then, so are we looking at a check raise strategy here with that some portion of our value?
It's a good question, so if you check and he bets, let's say.
Yeah, so Louis, let's take one of the lines that he does a lot, like, yeah, whatever size he likes.
What fucks me up is we check a lot, so I thought when we checked a lot, we'd have, when we bet, we would generally bet big. So when I see the small bets in a heavy check spot, it kinda throws me off.
See, the hand is too strong, blind versus blind, we just. You know, bet one or check call.
Although one thing, Louis, change it, change it though, have him bet two, not three, yeah.
Yeah, you give him a two.
Thing is, he's going three a lot.
He's going two more, he's going two more.
I saw forty, I think, I thought it was the forty-four percent.
Yeah, it doesn't change the response, though, it's still what it is.
Interesting, so.
Or you bet yourself.
Too much, uh, too much fast playing here, gotta slow down a little bit. I'm actually aware of that as a leak for me, uh, being a little too, uh, excited to get the money in and you let people off the hook, right?
Well, you see two pair and you're like, it's two pair, you know?
Let's go, let's put the money in and like seeing that you have five things behind, and you're like, we need to put money in if we ever wanna, you know?
Uh, I like, I think I like to double check, you could probably go for a street somewhere here. I don't know if you like block the river or maybe go a little bit larger on the turn, but.
I think the thing that probably led me to not block river is feeling like he has some queen X that gets there and then you just value on yourself. It'd be kinda cool if he has like, if it's like a seven, and then like seven, eight gets there or something, and then like, seven gets there.
Just feels like a one street hand, like you gotta get it, you gotta get it in somewhere, huh?
Yeah, cuz I feel like when, when third pair improves him, he always falls. You know what I mean? Like even if he improves into like fourth pair, if he picked up something.
I, I think it's gonna be on the turn, but maybe like, maybe when the queen comes out, we just don't ever bet.
So he doesn't have a checking range on this board.
Right, so that's gonna make it really goofy, huh?
Yeah, so my question is like, if it goes back here, do we ever bet here? After it goes check, check, do you ever bet second pair after, on a nice sideboard against CP, it feels bad?
Hey, uh, Louis, make it, make it two-tone and like, make it two-tone and don't give us a flush draw, see if that changes the, the checking frequency, so like.
So you can get him to find some checks?
Yeah, I'm just like, try to manifest a check to see.
Because even if it's only ten percent of his range, then we can actually.
A sideboard on early position versus buttons usually range bet, right?
Uh, pretty high, especially when it's dry, yeah, that doesn't even change it, like.
There's two broadways, so it's gonna be tough around there again, that's true.
You would have to change the ten. Like, you'd have to change.
Well, I mean, we can do like.
Eight or something.
We can just find that, cuz like I have, I have king nine suited here, so like we could just, you know, kinda.
I just wanna know if we ever lead turn after it goes check, check, but I can't like this, and the answer is no.
My guess is it's okay, but I guess a little thin, like, I don't think that would be bad at all.
Even top pairs, I'm like mostly mixing.
That's the thing, I just expected him to check back, flop with like ace five occasionally, as his, uh, like slow play protection option.
Yeah, me too, I, I definitely think you're gonna have some raggedy aces there if he has them in his range. His little pair makes some sense too, I guess.
Not betting the river either. That's fine.
Alright.
I kinda like raising that, uh, seven, I like raising this.
Spicy.
I'm limping here.
I like raising it, the offsuit ones, I'm basically range, range raising at this point.
We broke it.
Okay, even mixes folds and folds and raises.
Am I, yeah, I might mix folds, uh, this is good.
Oh, sorry, I missed it, what was the action?
Seven, four mixes, alright, I'm a little tight.
I'm a little tight, clearly.
This is good, I like betting, I think.
I wanna bet.
Yeah.
I don't think you have a checking ranger.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Shit.
Bad.
I jack big line or twenty D.
Yeah, I don't think it's bad, I just think you're gonna be better served betting. It's hard to win the pot with this hand, and this hand improves, like this hand has a lot of bluff equity, it picks up on the turn.
So king nine board, we bet like eighty percent in my mind.
Yeah, you bet a lot, right?
There's a bit of checking.
But the, uh, the queen jacket is definitely a, a bet one, especially when you have interaction with, uh, the suits, it looks like.
Or actually a bit the opposite, the queen of hearts.
It's always gonna be like that, if you have a heart in your hand, you don't mind seeing it turn, so you don't miss that as much.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but it's still like, uh, if you bet here, you can double barrel on the heart, so.
Yeah, and I think the key here, if I find this one, sometimes I need to not find it too often, right? Like, checking this occasionally, okay, checking it too often is really bad.
Yeah, I would say that it's a good way of looking at it. Raise, uh, okay.
I kinda wanna bet this.
High, high, low rainbow, um, you definitely can do some betting here, I just don't know if this falls into it.
But not having an ace especially.
I think, I think you definitely, honestly, there's gonna be a lot of checking here, but.
Now you're out of position in the turn.
But I know the thing we always talk about ace, ace high is the one where button does the best against us and king high, we do better, right?
Uh, this is the spot where he. We're supposed to do good, so we're gonna need four here, we wanna that is big, it feels bad, I don't think so.
Maybe worse.
It's like a low pair, it kinda feels nice though, cuz it gets folds from like eight, seven, you know, like hands that are quite live against us, but he doesn't know that.
Worst pairs might bet here, like your twos and fours.
This is a pretty bad pair, this is a pretty bad pair, looking at it.
It just bought pretty good, I mean.
It's actually exactly what Ken said, it's exactly what Ken said, the worst ones start to increase in frequency. The keppel effect, but yeah, for, I mean, for the majority, it's like, there's not a ton of betting here, and almost eighty percent checks.
We call this.
Uh, you know, I'm honestly, I, I, I think I'm okay, probably just pitching this.
They don't call some, I think. Fold some. The low pair are gone, and I'm maybe six is just turned to, uh, to bluff.
I think if the turn was probably less than a six, it still wants to call.
They'll call it in chips, right?
It's calling, but, uh, it's a pretty V.
It's pretty weak, right?
Pretty V minus.
Weird.
Yeah, you gotta pitch it there for sure.
I think it's just both ranges are so weak, right there, you're still, uh, putting them in, this is a, this is a board, I think. Um, these like middling rainbow boards, you can, you can bet out of position a good bit, but I don't know.
Favors, favors the button. Yeah, as well as nine, so.
And all the stats, right? Like I assume he has basically every set here.
Sorry. We have all, we have the better over pairs, he has pretty good connectivity still, though.
Right.
But a jack might wanna bet because it can still orchestrate.
So yeah, you can, what is this, us right here? Which one is this? It may be just like later position, I don't know if it's gonna wanna bet as heavily from early position versus the button, but, uh, I, I'm pretty confident there's gonna be some.
Yeah, I think having a jack, I think having a jacks good game, I might, might have bet this, so for sure.
I agree with that.
Whenever it was all ten, nine, ten.
I mean, I mean, like, this is, this is pretty typical, right? Like it's a lot of checking, but just, I'm just recognizing more so that you, I guess, can bet this.
Louis, go back to the solution real fast, I just wanna point something out here, uh, Galen, you're totally right, look at the difference between king, queen and king, jack.
King, queen?
Yep, and then king, jack, that's so much.
Well, yeah, like, uh, Ken said just now, the, the jacks a pretty important component here because you know.
Can make top end of the street.
Yeah, but like the thing with, I think probably maybe the thing that I didn't like with ace high is, uh, you just, you just get nothing better to fold, right? Like, his ace queen probably just calls one.
Not a face jack, and it's ace ten, maybe, you can get some better eyes to fold.
So fold's good, um, I think I defend this since you're in the big blind. Um, honestly, okay, so you're covering, you're covering one and you're not covering the other, hmm.
Yeah, what are you going to do if in jack or nine hits?
Yeah, right? I know I've been trying to pull out a lot of offsuit combos, and these spots are just focus on really trying to play.
More suited ones.
To be honest, the fact that you're covered by a squeezy there kinda just makes me wanna pitch it.
If I called both, we were all three.
So, yeah, the jack three you call, but check nine not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. This is a fold.
Not surprised to me anymore.
The other one was close, I don't think this one's, this one's.
I don't think this one's close, yes, calling from the small blind feels bad.
You can, you fold this versus one opener, this is a multi-way pot, like this is not.
Yeah, right, versus EP, you're folding that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a fake, a jack I fold. Same story, it's not suited.
Okay, okay, it's just like when we're this short, around twenty big line, I'm starting to align with my hard cards a lot. Yeah.
I mean, king jack, I, I think about it, you, it's not on your chart, but I think about it.
We need these jack or king.
Uh, if a jack or a king comes, and then what?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we have plenty big ones.
I was about to say, you get to lose the tournament then, Josh, your misery's over.
No, you get to double up.
Sometimes, yes, but, uh, most of the time, no.
So, uh, three ways here, you're covered by quite a bit by the small blind, I like a check here. Because I don't wanna get.
Is it just me, is it just me, if I've been running kinda cold in this tournament, it feels like I never hit, and like, there's always three people to the flop, and like.
So, so far.
You have the good opportunities.
There's not been anything too exciting.
Yeah, you're gonna hit more multi-way flops and PKOs for when you got players in there hunting.
Right?
Yeah, but you're gonna check here. Is this PKO?
Yeah, it's PKO, fifty dollar, fifty dollar PKO.
Having the diamond, I like this as a check a lot more, you wanna realize equity a bit.
I agree.
And they fold even less to you, right, to your seat bed, so.
DTO is gonna be difficult here because it's not symmetrical chip stacks and there's other elements at play here.
But I disagree, I think it's a great spot on the.
Yeah, you can pretend like, pretend like draw twenty-five, then go from there.
Even indeed, yeah, not a seat bed, then what's, yeah, then you know for sure. If it's close, then just don't do it.
Cause the big thing in PKOs, when, when you're not covered, you, you slow down, or when you are covered, you slow down.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda where I'm at with that too.
Yeah, that's like my simple, simple one sentence strategy.
Is it more of a queen?
They also learn that you can, uh.
More like a queen nine.
Limping from.
Um, I can't see the texture.
Queen, queen A two, right there, queen A two.
This one?
Yeah.
We, yeah, queen A two, yeah, that's good.
Close enough, the suits are switched, but that's okay.
Does, am I thinking here is, we could possibly bet for two reasons, we probably get called by worse a size, and we have a diamond.
How do you play versus check race?
Oh, you cry, man, you cry. I'm probably, that's, that's a disaster, like going, I still have a, I still have a reasonable chip stack, like I win a pot and I cover almost everyone, you know?
How do you play, how do you play the ten of hearts? When he jams on the turn?
Well, I'm gonna throw my cards in the opponent's face.
You call with jack four.
Alright, so let's see, check, check, and then let's see what, oh no, come on, button. So hands like ace king, that have the king has paid, could, it's mostly a check, right? Even with the ace has paid, it's a check, actually.
Yeah, it's mostly a check, so just check.
Ninety-five percent range check.
Yeah, so. The one that could a little bit.
I was, I was a very skinny player in the past, and I've been trying to limit my spew, I don't know if you guys can tell.
Yeah, so i- if you're gonna do it, so this is your button strategy, so first off, we know this right off the bat, we don't have big bets multi-way on this scenario.
Makes sense.
Only betting small, it is mostly betting, though.
There's a lot of betting.
Oh, the random betting.
So we're looking for bets kind of here, right?
Show, uh, show the betting range again, cover over one.
Yeah, but it's a lot of greens.
So a lot of queens, pairs, eight X, I bet a bunch of the suited stuff, flush draws.
You got a lot of gutties, you got a lot of like, there's a lot of draw stuff, there's a lot of wrapping cards.
Jack nine, king nine, I like betting king nine more than ace king here. I just think ace king has the, the curse here where it just gets everything that it dominates to fold, and it gets pulled by all pairs, so.
The interesting thing to me is, I never bet second pair there, and we need to be betting it, it looks like. On some.
Yeah, that's the thing, right? We have a little bit of better.
Yeah, every second pair, I don't mind betting.
And I honestly don't bet that often, I think, or maybe I do, it's button, right?
I've been trying to make some, some second bet, second pair bets, for sure.
You get the lesser calls, uh.
We could bet a little bit here, although most of our ace king are chips.
Easy, 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 easy fold.
You follow here.
I've bought a small blind bet into two people.
It's like, he just, oh, the, the.
He felt really cap, right? You feel like he, you're cap that he knows it.
But I think.
The pair queen.
Alright, so check it out, what is he doing on the flop? Is he docking his top pairs into two people? Like, I feel like he's almost range checking, so he's completely uncapped in my mind. I could be wrong about that. But like, small blinds range should be nearly range checking, I would guess.
I would peel with ace king, but.
Yeah, well, ace king is peeling. According to DTO.
Yeah, but with the spade, uh, you're folding even sometimes.
Now, it's the, this bar is leaving other street.
Yeah, it was missing.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Do you know what the EV thinks it has, Louis?
Oh, no, but I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, almost indifferent, I mean.
Yeah, we need, uh, we need our, uh, opponent to be a balanced bluffing aficionado.
Oh, we could have come in there with eight six off, come on.
You gotta take it out, my opponent doesn't know how to construct this range from the small one.
What are you saying, is, uh, free flop defense?
Yeah.
Cofto flipper.
Well, so yeah, like, that's kinda, that's kinda the idea of what I'm saying here, I mean, can you really write him off as like not knowing his ranges when he's just kind of bounty hunting?
Yeah, probably shouldn't be that wider.
I think it's a bit wider.
Yeah, but.
I don't think the, the kind of hand mode that it's with.
Yeah, well, that's fair.
Yes.
His shark scope, his shark scope is pretty spicy, I'll say that.
Feels like, uh, this is a call.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta call this.
Oh, this is the call.
The bounty hunter maniac.
So a better question is, what is the worst ace we're calling here? What, what, what's the floor of our calling range here? That's a more interesting question.
Well, I would say this is exactly.
Ace jack off, ace check off.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say ace jack suited, ace jack off feels like indifference for me.
Exactly, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I guess I don't know, though, that's why I was asking.
You don't call ace queen every time when he has ace jack.
Think ace jack is gonna be in range, and then if you go out there and play as jack every time, you're gonna be breaking even with it. So you might as well, you know?
Let's, let's look at our, let's look at our wonderful technical tools that we have available.
You, you don't wanna trust LTO.
I just.
And you know that you have to be tighter than Chippity.
Just wanna see, my man, I was thinking pairs too, we didn't touch on pairs, what's the worst pair?
All of them.
Except.
No, no.
Except.
But see, that's the thing, I don't.
Oh, oh, the child of the soonst tracks back, ace jack off.
I was gonna say, yeah, but you're, you're not opening that this wide, so you have to be a bit tighter calling off, probably.
Yeah, ace jack was gonna be in there for sure because it's twenty big lines, but if you go out there and call your ace jack every time.
In a bounty?
Well, I mean, like, like, this is kinda, this is kinda the.
That's the thing, in a bounty, they do, they will show up with some, some weird hands.
Yeah, also bounty, you're tighter yourself, huh?
Supposed to be calling king, queen off here at some frequency, at, at equally, at equally, I'm never.
So, yeah, you have to fold, uh.
Do you guys remember when I called off thirty bigs, uh, in a, in a five K with king, queen?
Oh my god. I like, uh, I like raising here, I think.
I'm thinking about jamming this.
Jamming, it almost feels like a smidge much for jamming, I don't hate jamming.
I think jamming.
But not ace jack.
No, uh, I don't wanna jam ace king, I wanna.
You never.
Look it up, always jam, thirty-five bigs, always jam.
Okay, so jamming is fun.
Yep, there you go, jamming is good, along with what pairs? It was doing some of the smaller pairs, huh? Or just basically all pairs, just basically doing all pairs.
Raising it with all pairs.
Yeah.
Very similar at forty big lines as well.
So do I find the jam? I feel like I want, I hope that I, oh, I didn't.
No, you took a, you took a post flop, and you didn't check race here, like, this is like, this has gotta be one of the strongest jacks that you're showing up, I mean, stronger, yeah, this is like this, one of the strongest aces you're showing up here with. So, I, we kind of know, like, you're supposed to be playing that portion of the range aggressively here.
So if you're hard to have a, a strong one with a calling range, you'd wanna have a spade in it. Without the spade, it drives up your sizing and your frequency.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, I looked it up, and just like you guys are saying on the sim, it, uh, it doesn't have ace jack, but it gets aggressive here with ace ten, it's the frequency.
If I didn't check rate flop, I think I would have docked turn.
And then, how do you structure your range after that turn goes check, check, and you have a strong top pair, this is a big bet.
Oh, yeah, you go uber.
Should be like one fifty, it should be like one fifty.
Well, okay, well, you gotta slow down actually, because there's a three, four, I mean, there's a, there's a four, like, a four gap, you're straight, straight here, which is gonna keep us a little bit in line.
You can have ace five, but that's almost the only ant you can have then. And you block a lot of ace.
That one was a bit nitty, I wasn't gonna get more money off of them, but it was a bit nitty.
Yeah, I would have, uh, I would have played that much.
I wasn't nitty, it was passive, you had, you could have played pre-flop on the flop, on the river, had many opportunities, I don't think you were paying attention. Were you playing a lot of tables?
Uh, usually I play six, but it's still a chance that I was distracted at that moment, you know, it could have been something on the other table.
Yeah. Cause it feels like it's hard to play very often in my mind.
I'm definitely, yeah, I think you played this hand fine, I think betting the flop's good. I think, uh, checking the turn.
Good, feels like it benefits from a lot of protection.
I think.
Fall without a horse, seven is without a heart fold.
Ah, man, I don't see, I don't see where we're, I feel like, uh, I don't see the benefit of barreling that turn, I guess.
Well, here's, here's my strategy when it comes to mono phone board, I will double barrel here after I range bet. Any turn that is not a heart or the board pairing, simple as that.
How does that line up with?
Yes, here's, here's my, what I've seen in theory is, um, you know, marginal may need to slow down, your betting frequency generally is quite low. Your mid cards of the suit really prefer to realize and then overflush his junkie, like if he has a four of hearts here, I would love to see the fourth heart on the river and then get a small bet in against him with some trash in it, we'll never call anything.
Two nine eight forty, so what is this button versus big blind?
Button versus big blind, I've seen that, you know, your unpaired hand with a single high heart is definitely the preferred spot progression, it's an ace of hearts, king of hearts, maybe queen of hearts.
So run that strategy, what, what's the strategy one more time, Louis, that you?
Don't bet, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, imposition on the flop can almost range bet any mono phone board, right?
Yes, that's correct, I know that for sure, that lines up.
On the turn, you need, you can double barrel whenever it's not a, a card of the suit, or whenever the board doesn't pair. But if it's a nine and eight or a deuce, which crew, but if it's anything else, we should be good, we should.
Even whatever, even when I, like, a lot of his continues to pick up equity here, like, he's gonna have some like.
I think so.
King X, jack X, queen X.
He's paying off with like king of heart tree.
Let's see.
So I, I almost kind of, yeah, I guess that's true.
You should check raise a lot of stuff that the jack's gonna help.
Betting a lot here, say we bet small.
Looks like you got about fifty percent check frequency on this turn card.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, you really need to check without the heart, but with the heart, you bet some. Louis, I got this one before you, sorry, I didn't know the answer to this quiz.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty fifty, yeah.
Yeah, so there's quite a bit of checking here, and I think it's probably, like, I think your heuristic has some merit to it for sure. I would be interested to say like, okay, like, if that was the three of spades, for instance. I would be interested to say, like, okay, like, if that was the three of spades, for instance, like, a true brick. Not of the suit, doesn't really complete any equity. It's probably gonna make it almost a range bet, I would think.
No.
Nope, still, still pretty check heavy with the same parts of the range. The only thing different is, I guess we have larger sizings now.
Well, hang on, you said check heavy here, but it's mostly betting, right?
Check heavy, check heavy frequency is like almost half. That's what I mean by check heavy.
Check, check this out if we roll off a heart.
So the pairs to interact with the straight are all checking, sixes, sevens, fives.
Now, now the checking range goes up and we're like, it's like, it's gonna be the flushes that are gonna be. And now, if we, if we roll off a nine, for example. See, nine drives up the checking frequency here a bit as well.
Yeah, honestly, the composition, like, the whole range composition seems to be, like, in the same neighborhood. What, what's really changing is, like, the actual sizings we use, which I think is pretty interesting.
Yeah, we polarize when the flush.
Yeah, like this card, like, this one made us, like, when you pair the bottom card here, like, uh, we're betting a ton of eight point four now. As opposed to like the other scenarios, we were kind of small heavy.
Yep.
But, I mean, this one, honestly, that card did jump the check frequency up quite a bit. Just made her range more polar, right? Bigger sizings, more checks.
So overall, we shouldn't borrow.
I agree. It's also like, you know, sucker end of the stray medium heart, like, we're getting a lot of action here, like, does he call us with ace of hearts eight? Like, definitely.
And we're just being honest, I, I like.
Pure checking?
Yeah, yeah, they work in, they work in. Um, I like this line a lot, actually. Personally, this is how I would have played it, I think. I mean, we're just, we just lose here to the eight, but it's kind of whatever.
I don't know if you need to call the river.
I think it's a theory call. I think you can decide whether.
I call it the heart, not unfold with.
I think you should have here a little bit, small.
I think I would probably bet small here.
I think I imagine that, uh, you know.
Honestly, it's like.
I'll get it then. I wanna give my chance to bluff with a zero percent equity hand.
Yeah, fair. I feel like his continuing range is just gonna be pretty binary there. Unfortunately, it's like. I, I honest, this is close. I think I, I call this sometimes, depending on the size of the bounty and like the player's frequencies. Like, if I.
Yeah. Depends what amount is in it, but if you're just a normal player, we don't stand to lose very much here. So I think I'm calling this a little bit quite often.
Alright, defend.
Is that a possible three bet?
Nope.
Ten eight at this stacked up might do it a little bit, but.
I don't like this at all.
Yeah, so the jack, this is, this is honestly kind of deceiving, right? Because, like, the whole rule is, like, if we pick up equity on the turn. We can usually start barreling, but we really didn't pick up equity here.
It's a big red defense, right? You don't really, like, do that all of a sudden, I think.
Against a mixed pops, you know?
I think, I think if I was gonna take a, a bet on the turn, I would probably go, like, smaller, but I think playing check there is probably fine. And what, what was it? Thirty effective?
So versus.
Did he check back the flop?
Yeah, he checked back flop.
I mean, I don't hate it. You're gonna bet your threes, right?
Yeah.
You're ace. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a decent amount of bets here, or I don't hate it.
So you are, like, uh, you are picking from some suited, uh, eight X, Tim, three betting pre. But since we're so short, it's just like you're jamming a lot, so you want more blocker heavy hands, it looks like.
Saw, yeah, I saw like a little ten nine nine eight.
Yeah, there's like king eight, queen eight, kind of in there a bit. Yeah, see, this is what I would have expected. I mean, it's in there, okay, like, it's fine to go big at some frequency, but I think recognizing the whole, like, range heuristic here, ninety percent of the time, we're just.
Checking.
Checking.
But all the flush draws are betting.
All of them?
Oh, at some frequency. Yeah, at some frequency.
Let's see. So the ones that pick up equity do not.
The worst ones.
Yeah, ones without a pair, ones without.
And your, and your best ones do not.
What do you mean, what, so the kings, the king nine, king ten, king jack, all the rest though, because the jacks are a pair.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, I, I see, like, you're right, like, they are all betting at some frequency. I was just pointing out the ones that don't. So the ones that pick up.
Yeah, it's kind of cusp-y, like, I'm playing this like it's one pip lower, like, I'm playing this like it's nine seven. Uh, the solver starts to check ten eight here more. I expect that one's really capped. Um, I wanna get him on king high.
Oh, so I see, this isn't pure betting, this is just diamonds and it's betting them, mixing betting with them.
Thirty percent.
My motion is right then, but with worse ones, like the ten I was, I don't know.
But this one's there, like, we saw him take passive lines a couple times. I'm happy with this.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I don't hate this.
And he missed the C bet there, so I think I'd like to be aggressive when they miss C bets.
Uh, yeah, definitely.
You should open this. You should open this.
That's an open, that's an open.
Uh, that's a good fold. This is like going to be a, a complete rainbow between, like, calls, folds, and maybe like three bets. Under the gun low jack.
Uh, so I need to V pop it.
Yeah, I guess it does V pop up. What does that say? Thirty effective?
Doesn't matter, there's no ace, no jack.
Exactly. Um, this is where I have to tell you guys I'm super using.
Super user. And, uh, defend, defend your fold, Tim, if it is eight max and it's under the gun, under the gun one.
Tell me you're not gonna let me down here.
I'm folding.
Folding snap fold.
Then.
Into the muck.
Pocket deuce, you never lose.
I'm, I'm calling this one once we're like thirty-five, forty effective.
Oh, my god damn.
Yeah, forty effective, a player.
Oh, it's not a deuce, but it's real, right?
Run, run, it's coming four five.
Ah, yes, kings, never mind.
Honestly, that was, pocket deuces wasn't even close there. He should be folding like sixes there. Alright, okay, okay, we're six-handed here now, like.
You gotta stop me in that, then.
Tim, I was defending you at seven. I can't, this, I can't defend you at six here.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Oh.
I mean, this is annoying, but like, I think you have, you have the price.
I think it's a call. It's a call and realize, right?
Uh, I feel like the small blind has a lot of, just, he's just got a lot of shit here. He's trying to ice it with, I'm probably just gonna jam.
Okay, jamming here, Ken. Are you kidding me? You open E P, he's closing the action, all he needs to do is to press.
You know, you know.
But he does not. He goes for the small tree bet, and you're gonna show up here and say, oh, yeah.
Wait, if we call, Ken.
You don't have the silver special here.
Small line reopening action if we call.
No, what?
Ken, I don't hate it, to be honest, okay, like, hey.
Only LP does this with ace five off.
Hey, Ken, honestly, like, I think it's a fine combo if they have bluffs, like, some people just never bluff from the big blind and then like.
This is why, this is why I'm folding, because I'm just so concerned that I'm up against queens plus here, like.
I thought there was a small blind racing.
Nah.
But, hey, for, for your defense, I'm looking at thirty big blind low jack versus big blind three bet. Half frequency jam with king jack suited.
It's a good hand to run, right? But I did think it was a small blind.
Hmm, hard to say. Let's see. I can pull up this tournament on shark scope and then try to figure out how far we are.
Well, you got all the names. You should be able to just.
Exactly.
It's only hand ninety-six, so probably not, right?
Well, it's a fifty dollar ten K, so it's not gonna be a huge field. I think this is like a three hundred and runner type field.
Well, lost doctor came in eighth, Dr. Warsnake came in fourth.
You don't have, oh, okay, you got.
Fifty-seven hundred red baron came in fifth, Buradi came in sixth. So this must be final two tables. Okay, must be.
Okay.
Okay, so what do you guys think about this hand?
So that's also probably why I was so, uh, willing to fold king jack two. I think we're basically found table bubble here. That explains that.
Man, like.
Did you guys always raise there? Cause I.
I like, I like one of two things.
I would check back here alone.
I was gonna say, I like checking back, or I like just piling the.
Yeah, if I'm to do anything here, I'm gonna like use a blocker, you know?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm never wanting to raise fold this. Like, if I'm gonna put chips in pre-flop, it's gonna be all of them.
Cause when you do that, it just opened the bo, the, the door of the box, right? And if it decides to put you in the box, you're not happy with it, it's not.
And I'm looking at, I'm looking at twenty-two point five effective ranges, and that's what it's doing. It's pulling basically all of these middling offsuit aces and the worst ones and just piling them in pre.
Yeah.
I see that. I pulled it myself, yeah.
So not a very good, good raise, but what, say we get here, we raise, we get stuffed, blind versus blind.
We can look at ace ten off, because it's the only one that's here, so we'll look at verse small blind.
How close of a call is this?
First limp raise. I mean.
Ace ten off. Detail wizard says it's worth six bigs to call off.
So ace ten off, you're supposed to be calling.
It's a final table bubble, though. So there's a lot of I C M.
And, you know.
So, but if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna raise fold it, I should not be raising it. I think that's a, uh, conclusion I have.
That's the takeaway, I would agree, Tim.
But once we're here, do we call up? Are we supposed to fold?
You know.
No, I think once you're here, you fold on the final table bubble.
There's a six here, there's probably other short stacks at the other one.
Yeah, like, you made mistakes to get yourself here, but at this point, you need to, uh.
So I'm looking at, uh, yeah, at this twenty-two effective, uh, uh, verse a limp jam. It's folding like the slivers of the, this hand that it actually has, and, I mean, if it's doing that at Chippy V, you can assume, like.
Yeah, definitely a fold that I see.
Yeah, it's not even close.
Okay.
Yeah, I like folding.
That's, you know, I've been working on is finding.
Could this be a little treat that sometimes?
Yeah.
You just don't wanna get in chip leaders waving.
You know, like, he's, I think if you're gonna do anything, you probably jam because that guy's got so many chips, but.
I think it's just a fold. He's opening into the other big stacks, like.
To be honest, I kind of agree with you.
Mama, you can't get in.
Yeah, exactly. It's the adult conversation. See your way out.
Yeah.
This is the guy who's three bet you out of two pots. And, uh, opened like almost every hand here. Like, this guy is just getting after it with his stack.
Yeah, and you know, that's the unfortunate thing about it, Pete, is he's allowed to do that and we can't do a damn thing about it. Yeah.
Gokes on him, I take first, so.
Yeah, exactly. You just can't police a, a guy with almost sixty big blinds when you're in the teens.
Or like, you can, but you do it with king jack suited, and you stuff it and you pray.
So this is a close one, too. This is a close one.
With the nine big blind here, I think this is the thing. Oh, yeah.
No.
There's a.
No.
Blind here.
Stop, stop. So I'll, I'll, I'll explain in more technical terms, alright? So the fact that there's a nine big blind stack there means that the risk premium between us and Mr. Warsnake is gonna be a little bit elevated. So when you have like these elevated risk premiums, that's when you start seeing some of these, uh, spicy combos come into play. Particularly like these suited high-low kings sometimes.
Exactly. The spice comes from the suited kings role.
Yes, and you're pulling from suited kings because you're targeting his weak ace opens. Mr. Warsnake here, if he's following an I C M adjusted range at all, should be expanding the fringes of his range along the trashy ace X region. Which with a suited king X, we're unblocking and we do fairly well against if the disaster happens and he calls, like, you know, with ace queen or something, right?
Right.
So.
And I think we prefer to not have something like king jack suited in this case, because we don't wanna get called by ace jack suited. We much prefer to have two life cards against ace queen, ace jack.
See, I think you still jam with, I think it's all of them. I think you jam, uh, ace jack for a different reason. I think you would jam ace jack, or I'm sorry. King jack, or did you say ace jack or king jack?
I said king jack, talking about his ace jack.
Right, I think you would jam a hand like king jack for the reasons it's just gonna realize equity pretty well.
Right.
Could be a spot, I don't know.
Final table.
Yep.
Okay, so we get in as a shorty and this guy has ten X first stack.
We're gonna end up heads up against him at the end, so stay tuned. He's a pressure too, he's super good.
I recognize the name Alpha Foxtrot. He's the only person I recognize here.
Like twenty K in winnings.
John, call. Flick the chips in.
I appreciate straightforward call.
Pocket deuce, oh my goodness, what is he doing with his deuces?
Dude, people, people like to punt again, people.
Open.
Love to punt.
He stuffs. Wow, that's not how you play pocket deuce, Dr. Warsnake.
Wait, 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 what's going on here? Why do you only have two big blinds?
Well, no, it's a bug. He min raised. And then.
Oh, it's just a bug.
Warsnake decides to stuff the pocket deuces in.
Yeah, the lost doctor must have a huge bounty, because it's like, I don't know why else you would play that aggressively there with pocket deuces.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of bad.
Just very aggressive, very aggressive.
Galen, Galen, you like, you like folding deuces?
I do like folding here. I don't really see any benefit of opening this.
Thank you.
Great, great idea.
Look at this, look at this, MVP ten, not, not having any of that guy's mess.
Forty bigs, he's, he's basically second. He's almost second, he's taking it to the street.
Uh.
I'm never folding.
Okay, Ken, that's good, but what do you?
Oh, wait. Wait, is he big blind? I saw the.
No, it's low jack, low jack versus big blind.
Yeah, we are big.
I'm big blind. I mean, I think this looks like a call.
Maybe you can call, maybe do something on a turn.
You can float, you can float one, I would think, but I mean.
You guys kidding? It's just not the obvious. I, I know what I wanna do here. I'm always check raising.
Oh, okay, that's, that's fine, yeah.
We get better. It's a high-low, we get the backdoor straight, we get the backdoor.
Third place. Do we, I mean, you definitely could check raise here. I think check raising here honestly is a fine action. It's just the king really interacts pretty well with our friend here.
Yeah, that's why I don't.
But there are two of them. And us as well.
For me, it's a.
Like, if I have a king here, I don't wanna raise either, so I'm not ra, like, I'm not ra, this is this part where I don't wanna raise my, my, my flopped.
Thirty big blinds effective here, Ken. You're from the big blind, it's a pair board.
Oh, you're definitely raising all of your king X.
Louis, right, it's a, it's a raise.
Yeah.
So like, I mean, I don't even think it's close in Chippy V land. Like, in Chippy V land, it checks too many boxes. I'm just thinking like the merits of like.
Well, see, I think on a final table, the move is just twice more powerful, because you check raise here. What is he gonna do? Yeah.
What's he gonna do with, what's he gonna do with queen jack, right?
Exactly.
Ace six.
Exactly. He's just done.
But, uh, for the same reason you said earlier, uh, that we wanted to target that cutoff when we were equal stacks. I'm basically equal sex to him here, looking at this now, so that makes.
Well, you're right, like, and I mean, you're definitely right. The risk premium between you playing with this guy is gonna be very elevated, like. You guys stand to lose just about the most at the table by playing a big pot together.
Yes.
Yeah, but if you're not gonna check raise, I like.
He puts all the pressure on M V P ten.
Joey, you gotta fix him, man.
Yeah, you're, you're very low. Yeah, this is just out of the way. I think, I honestly, I think a check raise there on the flop's probably fine.
It's a, it's a good thing to remember with that type hand.
This is an open.
Yeah.
The suited ones are just gonna be getting in there. You can fold like the trashy also.
I mean, because earlier you open like your king six suited.
I think, I mean, I think I've made a. I think, I mean, I think I've made a choice here to slow down the final table a little bit, you know, as a medium stack. And of course, there's limits, but.
So, this is probably, this is probably fine. I mean, you're both middling stacks. There's two clear shorts. You're basically. For the same reasons you would check raise ace deuce, I think playing this aggressively at some frequency is probably fine.
I wouldn't.
Let me take a look real quick, see if I can find a similar arrangement.
I have it in, well, I don't have a final table. I have chippy V, it's a, it's all three.
So, yeah, I was gonna.
Sure, but yeah, I would like to see an I C M similar.
Low jack versus high jack. Yeah, low jack versus hi- if it's twenty-five effective, it's just like you're just folding.
Yeah, folding, right? And then.
I see him.
Does it ever fall?
I mean, you, you call nine percent, you raise eleven percent, you fold eighty.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, but finding a sliver here is not crazy.
Okay, I thought, this is, this is actually, uh, this is actually a better one, I think. So like. Low jack versus high jack, same arrangement. I mean, honestly, this, this is closer represented and um it's completely indifferent. Like, you're still folding a lot. You're folding fifty percent of the time here, so.
So mostly.
I think, I think Louis' motion of uh just mucking it is definitely the way to go here. Now, that being said, if you. Uh, jamming's never an option. Not all in raising would be the option, but.
Ace queen off, ace queen off jams, right?
Yeah, this is a final table. Jamming here is not a good option with the two short stacks. It's a very, very unlikely.
Honestly, ace queen is probably playing more like what you imagine ace jack is playing right here, Tim.
Okay, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Well, just like, it's more of a, it's more of a raise than a, than a call. This is a, uh, this is a trash spot. What, what was the flop action? It went like bet, call, call.
Call, call, yeah, on a paired board.
I don't know. I would just call her, yeah. Anyone just calling here?
Man, so.
Just call, just call, you block.
All right, slow down a second. There was a question. So let's see. The question of, is anyone raising here? Like, um, there's a lot of uncompleted equity here, right? So there's two different straight draws. Two different flush draws.
No, who's got there, yeah.
And like, he could very well be protecting a lot of his, his equity with the fact that there's a paired seven there, but I mean, dude, I don't know. Like, I think, I kinda do like, tend to agree with everyone. Calling's probably the best option here.
I got new feelings now, looking at this because. We, there's two flush draws, right? So.
We blocked.
So if he's doing that with the flush, he's gonna play it perfectly on the river, like betting and playing it when he has it and folding when he does not, so. In that sense, if he does that with flush draws, we're better off raising here, but it feels like not.
But.
The action, you wanna invite this guy?
I know in these.
The flush terms were true, right?
I know in these current situations, we prefer to uh, we prefer to shut down the action, you know, by pushing it all in on the turn when we don't block it. Like, we love for him to have.
Yes, yes, okay.
We love to have gloves and shut him down with king, queen of clubs or get a light call.
Yeah, I think if you had a hard spade, yeah, I think if you had hard spade, I think playing hard spade aggressive would make more sense than playing diamond club.
Cause you're more worried about him having those flush draws then. A lot more worried, but kings are important blockers.
Well, it just pushes his, his, it pushes, pushes his uh turn lead there more towards value. When you're blocking, when you have critical blockers like that. But he also, he didn't raise the flop, did he? Like, he went bet, call.
I just think this whole thing, I read this as so defensive. I read this as so kinda, you know.
Man, the guy's a goofball though, like i- i- if he.
I don't put a lot of weight into turn leads, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think if he had a seven, he would have raised the flop, so.
Gotta pick uh the paired texture, Louis. There.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, or ten-five-five could be it, maybe. Ten-seven.
Eight-five-five is not terrible.
There needs to be a bunch of t- straight draws available too, is the only problem, and you need two flush draws, so.
So tell. Ten-seven-seven and put a queen, put the queen on the turn. Or seven-seven-six and put a jack on the turn, something that doesn't complete a flush draw, right?
Yeah, well, ten-seven-seven and put a four on the turn.
No, but it's a high card too.
Yeah, cause he leads on it. Yeah, so you gotta put the.
Hmm, gotta put the queen up. So here would be a queen on turn, queen of diamonds on turn, so we get sort of similar. So I mean, I figure we still just bet a lot here, right?
Yep.
We didn't talk about that, but I think we just, we have such a range advantage, they have like mid pocket pairs and stuff that are happy to call or. Continue.
Queen of diamonds.
Queen?
Yep, queen of diamonds.
That's the closest.
Right, so there's a lot of equity, there's a lot of draws, there's just no locked up equity here yet.
The one difference with this is our kings will be blocking some of the straight draws.
Sure.
That's true.
So we can play it like we have aces instead of kings.
There you go.
That's true.
So let's see what.
Although aces is also a more relevant flush blocker. There's actually a meaningful difference between kings and aces as far as the flush. Yeah, no. I just feel like big blinds lead is not, right, like at all.
See, I don't even, I, I don't even think that. I think it's probably a fine lead. I just, he's in a, he's in a weird part of the tree because. He shouldn't have a lot of seven X with how he played the flop is my only concern with.
Okay, so going back to the flop, it wasn't clear to me. But we don't have a bet here. This is a hundred.
Wow.
So we're not, this is technically a check, although they always use that color for like bet. There's no betting here.
Crazy.
So can't really use D T O because we're supposed to check this lot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I like this, I think. You know, you could really probably be targeting this guy with a hand like that.
You're right. You're absolutely right. Give it a non-all-in three bet, but like a five big blind three bet.
Yeah, you could pump it to five and he's gonna feel the pressure a lot.
I think you're right.
Uh, what happened here? Who opened? You just flat call with nines?
Low jack opened and I flattened, but high jack.
This is probably fine. Nines are like not great to have here.
Wow.
I think you let go here, to be quite honest. I think you fold here after it goes bet big call.
I would fold as well because they'd easily have a five and then this guy could have like bucket queen.
Yeah, dude, uh, Bull, Bull Ratty is completely uncapped here. Like, he's got all the big pairs still. Yeah. Good point. You got, you got.
Yeah. I think I was probably focusing on Dr. War Snake's lead being B S. And that's true.
Okay.
Uh, this is a nice spot. Bull Ratty was basically.
This guy got in here somehow. Okay, I see.
Yeah, this is a, this is a great spot, cause Bull Ratty's basically out and you get like the nuts here.
Great time pass bucket kings.
Honestly, like this is, that's, that's a sweet spot right there. I like this. I like jamming the hands. A little bit of a sweat, think it's good. Uh, okay.
Now, we, we have a fair bit of I C M again.
Yeah, there's like two, there's two bigs and two littles, so the fact that you're on the shorter end, yeah, you're, you're pretty locked up.
And it sucks that I don't have the, yeah, it sucks that I don't have a little on my left. Like, I want to be jamming them a lot, but I just can't.
I think that guy K A O is a um, he's a Brazilian reg, plays on G G a lot.
I'm sorry, but this is, I don't like it.
At this stage, I would um probably fold here as well, unless that was a. Very, very significant bounty.
Yeah.
Like even, even like he has ace ten here and we're like technically flipping. We don't, I don't think we wanna be running equity at final four.
Yeah.
Versus, like, we're, we're flipping versus bluffs is our problem. Okay. Opening four X, that's kind of interesting.
Seems to be a bit of a fun player. That's the thing, though, I felt like, uh, I don't know, the, the, the squeeze all in against an opener and a flatter. It seems light, like it seems like they show up with like pocket eight there every time.
The squeeze all in verse a, I'm not sure.
Against an open, an open and a flatter where he had ace ten and I called off with king, queen. It seems like they show up with like ragged aces and mid pairs plot.
Right, right, yeah, I know they, they do a lot. The problem with that is we're, we're still like technically behind his bluffs.
Yeah, it's. We're like forty to forty-five percent against that range, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a.
I C M is not good. Uh, with chippy V, with the bond these, I'm sure it's fine. Uh, but here, Ken, I really don't like your play. You went for a three-point-five X raise against the chip leader. When there's two short stacks here and then.
Yeah, but I think we need to have, we have some kind of opening range and.
You do, this is just not it.
Yeah, this is super, you just link call.
Well, but this trashy, like the, it's the.
Here, I can find something to help us out. I can find something to help us out. So.
I actually think this type of hand, or if it's not this, it's something kind of in this range, likes to get in there. It's a really easy raise hold, you know, like he, he comes back at us, we just ditch it.
So R F I from the small blind.
Got a decent blocker.
All right, so let me, let me just share for two seconds to kind of help il- illustrate this point.
But, but no, I mean, I haven't said this, this strategy. I haven't said like second in place final table.
I, I'll, I'll show you, I'll show you what the general motion is. You gotta let me share. It's a dissimulable, it's bluey.
Sorry.
It's okay. So, this is final four. And this is a little different, mind you. Okay, so this is like thirty, thirty, fifty. So when the guy's covering us and there's a ten, this is like what we're.
Reasonable though, it's not crazy.
Yeah, we don't really raise into this guy because we stand to lose so much here.
That's zero.
And he's just gonna make our life kind of miserable, cause like. If he's like not asleep at the wheel, he can just. He can start really pressuring us with some silly stuff here. I mean, granted, this is a really goofy looking range, is probably not gonna be like that in reality, but. He's gonna be defending a lot of this and it's gonna be hard to win chips off of this guy and we stand to lose a lot, so. Here's a little bit different, so this is fifty-four, opening into forty-two, while we are covered here. We cover here, still should be pretty tight, I would think. So. The fact that we're covering, now we're pulling from all of this kinda stuff, the boomerang type hands that we're talking about. But. So this is a little bit different, again, small blind, we're kind of the shorty here. The fact that we're covered is really what's kind of important here. Okay, so like middling. It's jamming a lot of this. This is like eighteen and twenty and there's a thirty-two with a five, but. This is like the closest one I could find. There's not a lot of options here. Like, maybe we can look at something five max, just. To kind of illustrate the point. So, okay, here, sixteen, big blinds thirty-two and then like.
That's too small to even open. Like, I would just never be opening off sixteen big blinds.
That's fair.
How about forty, sixty? Yeah, that one's the, yeah, that's one where I might actually have a raising range.
You just don't raise?
You just don't raise.
Twenty-six into thirty-six when there's an eighteen, you probably still, because you're both middles, but. A little bit, still like, not a ton, to be fair, your combo is in there.
See, that's what I thought. I definitely wanted to not be overdoing it, but I felt like a hand like this was a decent choice sometimes, but still, I could just skip it.
You can, like, the heuristic looks to be as you get deeper. And uh, you can start betting a little bit more. But uh, the fact that when you're covered and there's a, risk premiums are high, you uh, you really kind of shut it down.
There's another thing that I do think about here, though, uh, exploitatively. You know, they need to really put on the heat, not just like play their cards, they need to, you know, they need to go a little bit bonkers against us.
Like that, like jam, like jamming all in pre over your open.
You know. But like, if you don't think they're gonna do it, then, yeah, it's possible that this guy's just really good and I should, I don't think I had shark scoped him at this point and like. I think it would be a decent option against some other people and maybe.
Sam, you're getting boxed when you do that.
I, I've been watching this um replay and it looks like he has been getting after it.
Yeah.
A- as he should be.
You should never try to bully the chip leader because he's, he's pop up right now.
And like, okay, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about this, but that name K A O. Like, that matches a Brazilian reg that plays on G G a lot, and if it is the same guy, he's an absolute maniac.
Oh, yeah, man, the guy's um, the guy's ninety-five skill on shark scope, he's really good.
Yeah, and I mean, he, he's playing, he looks like he's playing accordingly. He's just being very, very aggressive in this situation, as he should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. He could be jamming literally seventy percent of his range here and it would be profitable.
Yep.
Yeah, it's like this, this is fine.
That one's such a disaster for me too, for third place to double up.
Oh, yeah, it really is, cause it makes it harder for you. Like, this is, I mean, this is probably okay, knowing what he's jamming.
Yeah, we know by now he's jamming any two almost, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, like, I know this spot, it's still dicey, but uh, I know this from sitting go study, like these kinds of spots, you still just have to call with. Some proportion and this is probably.
I think so.
Probably getting to the end of the range, but I think this is fine. Like similar, I jamed King ten suited a second ago.
Oh, you had a sweat on the flop. Wow, nice turn.
Now you can start pressuring him.
Well.
Not really, though.
He's a little bit.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta still be respectful playing pots with him, cause he's always.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but you don't have to keep.
But now, yeah, now the gloves are off. Now it's like.
Oh, really, Tim? Two, eight, oh.
You know, I don't hate this. I think this is fine.
I think I looked this up and I think.
I, I, I honestly.
That's a plays actually, so.
And against, against somebody who's been so aggressive. I mean.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
Let, let's just, right now, let's just imagine that that's Louis sitting in that seat. What are you gonna do? You're, you're not gonna respect that raise at all and.
Yeah, when you face two over cards on the flop, it's gonna be hard.
Uh, yeah, I looked it up, um, this hand in G T wizard, so like jacks and tens shove a lot. Uh, nines, asevens, fives, fours, all jam like twenty percent, give or take for different combos, so it's in there.
I think it's.
Did you look at the, at the chart?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at thirty-four bigs or thirty-five bigs heads up chart.
Okay.
My jamming range, there's some, some pairs, uh, ace, king, down to ace jack off, ace, king, ace, queen suited, a couple off two trash aces. And then you actually call with aces, kings, queens. Oh, this one is spicy.
Yeah.
Look at this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It helps, it helps when you hit almost every flop and heads up.
But actually, you know what? I think it goes along with this hand here, because you check. I would see that probably a little bit here. Then when the ace comes, I would see that again. But I think this play comes from here that you raise kind of a weak hand. But it's kind of the emotion. So he folds now, but.
I honestly, I think this is fine, because you've both played your ranges so weak here, like.
Exactly.
The second pair is gonna be good here quite a bit. All of the straights, like all of the uh low straights bricked, all the flush draws bricked. I think you just raised too big on the river.
Yeah, but. Here after, right after we raise again. So that's why I'm saying there might be a link, because he might have enough of it.
Well, yeah, yeah, you honestly, you might have annoyed him of that previous hand, so it's just like.
And I think both of them are pretty theory, like you guys were saying, I really felt, I thought about in time that, that, that queen was like not a weak hand. That's the nuts on that runout, like given our, our betting action, like, I'm just expecting to have value and I'm expecting to get called by weaker queens and jack X.
Yeah, that's why.
And further down, I think.
That's why.
I think theory calls.
Like, uh, he's gonna have a hard time calling like his trashiest of trash hands that he has there, that he's protecting like a deuce or something.
Yeah, but yeah, I think theory still calls like third pairs and stuff there. It's a.
It probably should.
Heads up ranges are crazy wide.
Yeah.
All right, Lou, what's the, what's the action on this? Is this limp limb?
Yep. Then you. Stuff.
And then it's queen nine-ten rainbow.
This play's probably fine. He has jacks here, yeah.
I don't know, I didn't really like it. Um, like, what is, why does Jack need to get it in, you know?
He's a gambler.
Yeah.
I mean, like you said, it's, it's heads up. He can't just give you credit for like.
All right, so can I actually share my screen? Can I share my screen? Uh, entire screen, yeah. Yeah, I thought about this one. Um, I think I mentioned at, uh, in one of our, um, sessions a couple of weeks ago that on this last hand, I really felt like I outplayed the guy, even though I think he's generally better than me. Um, here it is, we, uh, small blind calls, big blind checks back. We're on queen ten-nine. I check. Jacks are, are a check for him. He needs to be checking his check back range. Cause on that other hand, I get money off of him on the river in a spot where I know he doesn't have value because he's, because I don't think he has good hands when he checks there. And I was actually trying to get value, but I could just easily just bluff shit out of him.
Right, I think, I think you'll see why that's a check when you bet it. So like, if you bet it and you, he gets raised, you're probably supposed to play it aggressively, which is kind of like not super fun.
So my sizing is what, like roughly four or roughly five?
You went four.
All right, so I thought four. And it's kind of a thing with queens having off. I felt like it would be, yep. Yeah, it's in there. And like, anyway, obviously, I just expected he has some mix of jack X, ten X, nine X, like, you know, I think he has a lot of hands here that I can get value from. Sometimes I'll run to a better queen, but that's life. I go four, Jack's is still just a call, raising all in. Look at the huge EB drop. Um, calling with two big blinds, raising all in is worth point seven.
Yep, touche. It's a.
That's bad.
Blunder.
It's a blunder. Cause I'm supposed to have, let's look and see if I have the hands in close hat here. Do I raise jack six? Yeah, yeah, I probably do at some frequency.
You're blocking.
He blocks it so hard.
Yeah, yeah, he's double blocking all of your bluffs. So it just kind of makes it like, eh, not great.
Right, so that's why it's so bad. And then like, you know, do I raise?
Like, you don't have a.
Type hand.
You don't really have a prominent raise range here. You don't have a lot going on here, except for like, you're basically top pairing it or you're balancing that with like, open ender. Yeah, top two or like open enders. Like, you don't have a huge raise range here.
Yep. And the hand I found is not crazy, but it's, you know, it's not the most common.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. I, I, I don't. I mean, this was, I was more curious about his play and with the jacks, to be quite honest.
Why is it pulling so much from the eights? Cause of the connection?
I'm, well, the eights are an opener. Some of them are, like, they're gut.
I think it's a, I think they make a good, a good, uh, that's hold. I bet if we, if we go four and then he goes all in, I bet we're gonna see it, does a lot of those aces is just fold.
Oh, I would say so, yeah.
King eight, yeah, king eight's dawn.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems good.
Cause I was wondering why, why it was so heavy with the eights, but so light on the sevens.
I think it's just one of those, yeah, they have a direct. And I think it's also one of those things, like, where there's two cards that interact with the straight. If you do all combos of both of them, you're bluffing too much kind of thing. So it usually splits it.
I thought this one was, was really interesting to take, have this moment against a guy who I think is better than me and be like, oh, I outplayed him on this one hand at least.
Well, I don't know, Tim, because it's like twenty big nine, you get top pair, you get second pair. He's probably not supposed to fold whatsoever and you're supposed to, so for me, it's kind of.
Hey, what? He, he loses one point three bigs when he, when he jams.
Tim, I'll let you have it. But, Tim, I'll let, I'll let you have it, Tim. I'll let you have it. You outplayed him.
Tim, good game.
Good game.
I don't know. But Louis, you're saying if he calls down, but he didn't call down. You're right, he should call down because I should have a bluff here sometimes.
Yeah, but the outcome of the hand is kind of the same, right? He's not supposed to fold, you're supposed to bet.
Uh, no, but you're looking at just the hands we have. I mean, range versus range, Jack's does so much better.
I mean, to be fair, he makes a mistake, you, you like bang on this mistake. So sure, you exploited him, but for me, it's kind of like he's not supposed to fold. Uh, it's kind of going in, it's kind of a setup.
Well, actually, can you run, are you sure? Cause if, is he calling three streets after the ace hits to turn two?
All right, so give me, what turn do you want to see? Like a brick five, something really bricky?
Well, no, I think when, in game, I think an ace hit the turn.
Same runout. He.
Like if he.
Same runout.
If he just called instead of shoving.
Ace is paid on the turn.
I think he can get a walk.
Yeah, maybe, but.
And it, and then you, it goes bet call here.
So queen seven, I often still want to bet, but I want to check a lot as well. I probably.
Well, if.
I guess, right?
If, if it goes check, check, he's definitely gonna call on the river.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if it's, if he can call three barrels.
All right, so let's say I go, so I, I keep the gas on, I'm feeling spicy. So here, Jack finds a little bit of a jam.
But it's still continuing, right? So he's not.
Yeah, it's still continuing. Yeah.
That's my idea, because at this SBR, from the flops, like second pair with a redraw, so it's just cruel. And you just got the better half.
Yeah. But also like, I mean, he saves himself money and that's part of why it's worth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. He makes a mistake, definitely.
Cause like.
It's a lie on this mistake.
Well, on the turn, this, this turn comes and I can, I'm supposed to check seventy-five percent. It's like I check and he saves money.
Yeah, and then on the turn though. On the turn, though, he's still going to call because he still has the open-ended with, with the third pair. But then when the river bricks, can he?
The river?
I think it was a low card. I can't remember which one.
We'll give it a five. So I could still go.
And if he three, if he three-barreled, does he still have a call?
And Jack's is still calling. In fact, it raises, I guess, as a bluff now. If I go all in here, Jack's is still calling.
Okay.
It actually is higher E V against my big line because it blocks my straight so much, so I'm left with bluffs. Against my small line, it's worth a lot less, because I think I just always have like queen X on this line. Interesting hand.
Yeah.
Very nice, Tim. Hey, congratulations. Nice little victory. You were like, why, like, when the final table started, guy had one hundred twenty big line, you had fifteen. So, well played at the final table. And thanks a lot for sharing your hands. Thanks for pinning yourself out there. I know it's not easy. Yeah. See you guys around. Oh, by the way, I'm gonna move to Discord, so if you guys want, ask me for an invite. I'll invite you guys to Discord and see you guys around.
Yeah, I'm in Discord.